We're gonna, so those are the three of the other ways. So are we ready to go? We're live?
Yeah, city attorney is running a little late, but he'll be here.
We're ready to go? Are we? Okay. Today is Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. It is now 6:03 PM. This is a regular city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This meeting is now called to order. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Deputy Chief, or I've been told again.
May we gather here today with open hearts and open minds seeking wisdom, understanding, and guidance. Let us be mindful of our interconnectedness and the responsibilities that come with it. Grant us the strength to face challenges, the compassion to support one another, and the clarity to make wise decisions. May this time be filled with harmony, understanding, and peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanis is excused. Commissioner Candida Blanca. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr. is excused. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 4th, 2023, regular commission meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion or a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Anyone here for public comments? Seeing none, next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Go ahead.
Good evening, manager, commission, and residents.
No, you're the manager. I'm the mayor, you're the manager.
Oh. That tells you how tired I am after last night. First of all, we had a great event last night. Our last count was 3,850 people showed up to our events. I want to give kudos out to our staff, starting with Public Works, Franklin Murthel, Yoniel Correa Correa, Freddie Leon, Luis Valencia, Boris Rodriguez, Carlos Fontiroche in passports, Isis Amato in community center, Evelyn Paz, Carmela Herrera, Roloflo Lopez in parks, John Michael Lopez, Karina Piñera, Tommy Gamazo, Morelos Perez, Sergio Martí, Laura Aguilar, Christian Avila, Angelica Roman, Jalen Gorgi, Julio Iglesias, not a singer. And in the police department, we had a nice, a nice event, no incidents, no issues. I want to personally thank Chief Carlos Avila, Deputy Chief Pete DeGado, our three sergeants, Carolina de la Luz, Elvis Borrego, Victor Rodriguez, our detectives, Richard Minorden, Luis González, our MPO Felix Vasquez, and our officers, Miguel Rego, Lázaro Carus, Eric Alvarez, Carlos López, Lázaro Jiménez, Alberto Morciego, Ricardo Roque, Sargi, I was gonna do it. I told you, I told you, Thievenat, Dariel Suarez, Anthony Suárdiaz, Ernesto Corbello, Jairo Echaveria, our dispatcher Christian Rubio, and Terry Carbohm. I also want to thank our volunteers. I want to thank specifically Natalie Milan from Miami-Dade County's Hispanics Affairs. I want to thank our city clerk, Eddie, for helping us out. But a special shout-out goes to the following four for the work that they did that was exemplary, and that would be Gabby Lewis from Communication, Lizzie Pitzer, Yanara Modrono, and Gloria Rodriguez. Without them, this event wouldn't have shined as brightly as it did. I also want to remind the commission that we had a citizenship drive on 10/21 that was held with Commissioner Cabrera's office in Cava, which was an extremely highly successful event. We also had an event with US state, US Representative Maria Vara Salazar. It was an academy recruit day on October 12th. I want to have another shout-out for Sergio Thievenat, who was awarded the Miami-Dade's Chief Police Officer of the Month, and a mayor, I think you attended that. I want to bring up a couple other things that are, I'm gonna skip some of this stuff because it's a long report and I don't really need to go through all this, but we have a, we're starting to get into focus, our end-of-the-year financial snapshot. It seems that our revenues for last year totaled $9.26 million. Our expenditures were $8.85 million. That includes, that means that we finished last year with a surplus of $650,000, and that's after paying off some of our car debt and after paying off our sanitation debt, because we're working very hard in reducing our debt as much as we can. Remind the commission and the residents that the sanitation trash bins rollout will be, it's around the corner. We are starting to deliver the notices to every single homeowner. It starts tomorrow with the sanitation trucks, drivers delivering them to everybody's door so that they understand that we're gonna be getting new trash bins, and if they want to recycle their old ones, they're gonna have a little sign that says recycle, and they will be handed out to everybody. We also will be starting our sidewalk pressure cleaning initiative, which is part of your Clean Streets Initiative. We are scheduling the town hall with the police department, I believe, for December 13th at 6:00 PM. It'll be here in the chambers. And I wanted to do a little reminder for the residents, and this is on co-compliance issues. Recent state legislation has passed a law that says no co-compliance complaint can be given anonymously. We've had a rash of anonymous complaints on roofs and anonymous complaints on illegal parking. We have informed a few of the residents that were doing it that their names would have to be attached to those, and they've somehow stopped calling in. We're here to make sure that people live by our rules and are in compliance, but we have to make sure that we also follow state law, and if you have a complaint, your name has to be attached to that complaint. That's part of state law that we must adhere to. The city clerk is gonna bring up the, in her discussions, the schedule for meetings for next year. We also have a recommendation, if you so choose, to cancel our December meeting and reschedule our very first meeting in January for, from the January 3rd to January the And the last thing, the last thing that I want to have, a conversation on Southwest 9th Street. This is a street that's had a serious issue with parking up and down the swale. We are looking at, and we're waiting for our city attorney to give me a legal ruling on it, but we're looking at trying to exclude overnight parking, so we might ban parking on that swale from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and we think that that may alleviate a lot of the issues that the residents, the single-family homeowners residents have on that street. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
All right, does anyone have any questions for the manager on his report?
No.
Seeing none. Mr. Manager, is the, is the Save a Life program in your report, or is it a separate?
Oh, I'm, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me. I am so sorry. Yes, I was gonna make the Save a Life program as part of my manager's report. I am, I'm sorry, guys. If you can come up to the dais, please, and give your report. Thank you.
First off, I just have to drop off some things first on my report. So, you guys go. This is just a pamphlet talking about the Save a Life program. And then I do have like a signing sheet for my bosses to know that I actually came in this morning.
Well, we'll get that signed for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How's it going, everybody? I hope you guys are having a great evening. My name is Juan Rosales, and I'm actually from Doral. I'm super ecstatic to pretty much be here when it comes to a meeting like this. I've never really done it before. Oh, the mic's right here. So sorry about that. But yeah, I'm here to talk about the Save a Life program. It's a health and wellness program that relates to first responders and public workers of Miami-Dade County. Last week, we just presented over our services for the First Responders Day that was happening over in Tropical Park, and we had a great success with that, meeting with a lot of people that were very important to pretty much let everybody know about our services. Now, as you guys opened up the pamphlets going into this, these are cardiovascular exams that come with no out-of-pocket cost for you and your family. There are over, up to nine exams that we are offering over at our clinic in Miami that relate to stress tests, which is for your heart, that, you know, checks out your heart response to stress levels, an echocardiogram that has a heart ultrasound, just to check for any abnormalities that retract to the heart. You also do have your vascular ultrasound that relates to arteries and veins, the PFT lung function test, urinalysis, an ABI, an electrocardiogram, and a chest X-ray, and a complete blood panel. Now, to just stem off from these tests, these are pretty easy and able to get when it comes into, coming into our clinic, we're pretty much being a one-stop shop to allow you guys to get all your exams over with and done, not being referred over to another physician. We're not also trying to take away any of those services from your physician that you guys are able to have. So that's pretty much the basis of it. And then for the back of the pamphlet as well, we also do have a QR code as well when it comes into bringing in your family that you guys would like to bring in, which are 18 years or older of age. And after that, that's pretty much it for my presentation, just quick and easy, just for you, right? And if you guys have any other questions when it comes into the Save a Life program, I'm more than able to answer. I'm also gonna be passing out some sheets, like for you guys to sign up, and we'll go from there.
And this is for the first responders and there's, and Public Works, and this is reduced...
Any events that could be happening that you guys may be having at City of West Miami, we would love to attend to the report.
Okay, well, continue working administration, and does anyone have any questions for him?
No.
We appreciate you, work with administration, and let's see if we can do something to help our, help our officers and employees. All right, do you have anything else in your report, Mr. Manager?
I hope that concludes it. Thank you.
Good. Next item, please.
Yes, item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Okay. Next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
There's no report tonight. We have a couple items on the agenda that we'll address.
Yes, sir. Next item.
Item nine, committee reports.
Well, committee reports, I would just like to, again, reiterate a lot of the things the manager said. You know, I was there last night. Obviously, it was a, you heard the names of a lot of staff that participated that weren't in the events department, and it was an all-hands-on-deck situation, and everyone, I think, I saw everyone really working hard. A lot of people volunteered, a lot of people's husbands and family volunteered, so we're very appreciative of that. And honestly, the results were apparent. Everyone that I've spoken to thought the event was phenomenal. We, you know, we know that we had in over a bunch of people than we could ever expect, so that was handled very well. We were prepared for it. The police did an incredible job of keeping everything safe and in check. You know, a lot of people told me how safe they felt at the event, even with that many people that were there. That's credit to the police department, so I really, everything, everything the manager said on that event, very, you know, just all-around great, really great job. Thank everyone. And, you know, we'll do it again next year, and hopefully not bigger. Better, but not bigger. But that's it for committee reports. Your next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening, Mr. Mayor. Item 11, new business agenda items. Item 11A, this is a second reading in a public hearing. An ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami amending City of West Miami's only ordinance to 82 as amended. Section 4A3, general regulation common to R1, R2, A and C use districts prohibiting the overnight parking of any commercial-type vehicle on any public or private in an R1, R2, or A use district, except in a completely enclosed garage or site of the dwelling, providing for registration and registration fee, providing for penalties for conflict, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I've spoken to the, to the county, the commissioner that wanted to bring this forward, this item and the next item, and the third item, and we would like to table it for the next meeting if possible, please, because he won't be here.
Yep. What's the procedure on this? Whether to continue it, or do we have to republish?
You don't have to re-advertise it.
So we just continue it?
To continue until the date and time certain, yes.
Okay. Do you have a motion to continue? Do you have a motion on this? We have to?
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion or a second? All in favor say aye.
Yes, and this meeting is, this public hearing is continued until January 10, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Should I read the next item, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Item B, 11B, this is a second reading in a public hearing. An ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami amending Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5-5, by providing for a substitute schedule of fees for services rendered by the city as recommended by the city engineer and attached here too, and made a part hereof at Exhibit A, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for ordnance in conflict, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, again, we would ask for it to be continued to a date certain, to January 10th. There's a few things in the fee schedule that we have to verify and work with the city engineer to make sure that we bring it forth in the correct manner.
Motion.
If a motion to continue?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item C, second reading in a public hearing. An ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 9, Article 7 of the Code of Ordinances, transient vacation rentals, including additional definitions, expanding life safety requirements requiring smoke and carbon monoxide detectors hardwired to the main electrical system in every room of that vacation dwelling, requiring ground fault circuit interruptors, requiring licensed electrical contractors to conduct any electrical installation, increasing license costs to $2,500 per year, limiting to one permitted and one unit per vacation rental dwelling, requiring proof of registration of vacation rental property with the property appraiser of Miami-Dade County, providing for sanctions, repealing sections of Chapter 9, Section 7 in conflict with this ordinance, providing for severability, providing for renumbering, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, once again, the commissioner is not here, and we request that this be moved to the January 10th meeting.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Say.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to continue passes. Next item.
Item D, second reading in a public hearing. An ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami relating to commercial waste pickup service by the City of West Miami amending Chapter 8, garbage and trash, Article 2, fees for city service, Section 8-26, Part B, Part 2 of the City Code, increasing the quarterly fees from $62.50 to $500.00, providing for a scheduled fees for collection and disposal, providing severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing for codification and an effective date.
Okay. Who's gonna provide some context to this ordinance?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Some context to the ordinance?
Well, the reason for the ordinance is that we have had, we have a lot of commercial properties that are using our services and they're paying the same exact fees as the residential users, and we just want, we thought that it would be a fairer thing, especially on the ones that have a substantial amount of trash, for them to be charged at a more equitable rate than our residential users.
And this fee is still typically cheaper than a private company?
It is cheaper than a private company, and there is a caveat in terms of the amount of trash that could be given, and there's a charge above that, above that threshold in the ordinance, and I'll, it's for four 30-gallon containers once a week and a dollar per 30-gallon container in excess thereof.
Is there any questions or comments or concerns on this proposal?
This is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You are correct.
You have to open a public hearing.
You are correct. Public hearing is now open. Is there any, anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Back to the table, is there any questions or concerns on this ordinance?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have a question and a comment and a suggestion. This is related to this, about 20, 20 spaces. Some are small, some are wider, some are bigger than others. I, my idea in this case is, this increase is proposed according with the size of the place, because maybe it's a small business, you know, like I put an example with the floor. The lady who cut the hair and fingernails, she comes here to help the old residents at the dining room. She have a small space. I think it's a 20, 20, 25 with, with. There are others that, you know, are 50 or 40. And I think this, in my idea, we should make some kind of proportion to the size, a proportion to the garbage that they generate, make it increasing, because I put the example, because I go there many times, and the garbage these people generate is not the same garbage that other spaces here that are 50 front. I mean, it's a double or triple. And my idea is a recommendation to the city, study this, and stay to increase according for everybody, try to see who is bigger than others and who generated more trust than others. Because for years, we were charging $62. It was a commercial place, and we were charging like a presidential in certain way. So my recommendation is try to see if we can do it in proportion to the space and proportion to the garbage generated. I don't know what the administration think.
Well, I have questions to piggyback on what the commissioner asked. Number one, and maybe we don't have this information available, how typical is it, because I know in the commercial buildings that I've dealt with, we've always had private companies, how typical is it for a municipality to service commercial properties, number one? And number two, what is the standard practice? So the commissioner brought up a storefront, which I won't keep using her name because, you know.
Well, I made a wrong, because it's quite a foolish.
Right, right. So you mentioned a storefront that I'm very familiar with, and I didn't know that's one of the, one of the services by its spots, but I do find it atypical that a tenant in a large commercial building would be having their own trash service. Is that, is that typical as well? Is it typical for a storefront in a strip mall to have its own trash service? Because usually, doesn't usually the building itself have its own pickup?
Standard is a usual strip mall would have its own dumpster location and its collection. The issue here is it hasn't, I mean, it's a valid point that some are gonna have more trash than others. If you had a typical, if you had a typical dumpster that's picked up by a private hauler, the fee would be more than what this is. That said, some of these strip shopping centers, sometimes this is an older, an older area, they're, even though they're connected, it's not really one big building, they're individual things, and they have their individual pickups.
I have an exception.
I'm trying to do something equitable here, and I understand what you're, what the commissioner is saying, but at the same time, it's very unfair that these commercial entities are paying the same as our residential entities. There has to be a more equitable solution. If the question is to table it and look at it in terms of volume, my suggestion would be, we would still have a minimum fee and then raise it based on volume, but if we're gonna go down that route, there's some of these commercial places that all they're doing is putting the trash bags on the side of the road and expecting us to pick up 40 and 50 trash bags, then my recommendation would be requiring them to put them in a dumpster location.
No, that's definitely an issue, and that's definitely an issue with, as well, and we've spoken about this, the commercial locations that have some more specialized waste that we're currently picking up that we maybe shouldn't be, or maybe should be, you know, picking up. I think it's putting our employees in times in, I won't call it harms way, but in uncomfortable I wouldn't be opposed to looking back at volume with a minimum. I would also ask, considering we're coming into a new, into a new service on the residential trash, whether we have the capacity to generate revenue by expanding commercial operation? Because how many, how many sites do we currently have on a commercial basis?
I believe it's 20, right at 20 sites right now.
We have 20 sites, and, and we're, I mean, obviously, before your time. Do you know if those were advertised? Because I didn't know until this was brought up that we even service commercial sites.
My understanding is that these have been longstanding accounts that we have been servicing for quite some time.
Right, because I don't know if the entire business quarter even knows that we offer, you know, offer this service, or if it's something that we actually typically actually publicly offer. So I wouldn't be opposed to looking back at a volume, bring it back with a minimum, look at a volume.
I have an example. See if the manager can have a consideration of this. For instance, the bakery will be $500, right? The bakery next to the...
I'm really not sure if they're one of the accounts that we are hauling for right now or not. I don't know the 20 account, I don't have the list of the 20 accounts that we're hauling, but as an example, the bakery.
Well, let me put an example. Maybe pathetic, but it's something that is functional. Suppose the bakery is paying now, I don't know, was paying less, $500. And I put floor because I know it's about 25 by... 50, maybe less. 1,000 square footage. The garbage generation from that parlor, beauty parlor, is not the same as the, let me, let me finish. Now, can we do something like, in this case, actual propose a square footage, and in the future, the new business that come here, it's a flat, commercial is commercial, and then put the 500 commercial for, can we do something like that?
I think, I think you would actually...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to help, you know, the small business here.
I think you're, I think, I don't think we have to revert back. I think if we set one standard, we can set one standard on, but I don't, I don't, and I'll leave out to administration to bring back a recommendation, but I don't think it's likely to be on square footage. It's probably gonna be on volume. You could have a huge place that generates no trash, or you could have a place that is the size of a closet that generates a whole bunch of trash, right? So it'll be on volume.
I'm talking West Miami.
Right.
The 20 properties that we have here.
The small storefronts that you're talking about that generate, that generates small amounts of trash would probably be in line with square footage, but having a standard, I don't think we need to have two standards, the old accounts and the new accounts. I think we can set a standard, whether it's volume with a minimum of volume, and just set that going forward. But look, let's, let's bring it back, let's bring it back, let's bring back a recommendation on, you know, on creating some sort of standard. I think it's on volume, but I'll let the administration decide the recommendation. And let's bring it back with a commercial minimum and plus volume, and let's go from there. Would you like to, go ahead?
Let me, let me, the next question. You are thinking that it's by the name, the function. Commercial is a commercial fee.
No, I'm saying, I'm the same, same thought pattern as you, but it's instead of square footage on the amount of trash they generate.
No, I understand. I'm just talking about a few pieces, a few small business that we have here. But anyway, I understand that commercial is commercial, residential residential, and if we have a concept for the definition, house here pay, I say, the residential, doesn't matter if it's one room more or one room less. I understand that. But I was thinking in that way. I don't know if it's possible or not. I don't know.
Yeah, well, let's go back with the recommendation.
What is your recommendation, your idea?
No, in the lines of what the mayor's saying, the most... No, I, in, in the lines of what the mayor is saying, the most equitable way of doing this is based on the volume of, of, of trash that the business generates. That's usual, that's how it's done, that's how, that's how it's done in Miami-Dade County is based on the cubic yard of trash that's picked up. In fact, you have something later on in the agenda today about that. We will have to come back and look at it. I think there is three components to this. One is a safety component, one is the inequitable way of charging it. And the third one is letting our other commercial entities know that we have this in case they want to add on to it for us to be able to expand those services. Because it's also a matter of fairness all across our commercial corridor that we can't have twenty privileged, and I'm just throwing out that number, twenty privileged businesses. And the other ones really don't know that this is a practice that we can do. So if we have to bring it back, I think we need to study all three of those components and bring it back in a fair, a fair and equitable way.
This proposal, which we're not passing tonight. This, this proposal would be cheaper than a private company going out, which is typical.
With a, with a waste container pickup, yes, sir, it is.
My question was that, do you know, you know, waste management in this case? How much they, they, they charge a flat rate for it or they have a different containers for that?
They have, that depends on the size of the, of the, of the, of the, of the containers. They have different prices, but this is still less than what they would be charging.
And you have an idea how much they charge for?
I will, I will have that at the next meetings. If we're going to be tabling, doesn't bring it back.
Yeah, that's great.
I will have their, 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 uh, price list here for you all to have.
Because what I want to put in the, well, we don't have a web now, we have no. But I, what I like to know is that the residents know that we have been discussing the matter. Because as is an increasement, increasing the fee that people know that we have been trying to get the, the best deal.
Yeah, so, so, so let's bring back a recommendation and let's bring back a comparison to private, to private operations. What are we doing with this item procedurally? Well, no, it's going to be.
Continue.
Continue it, continue, we can edit it from a, okay.
You think for the next meeting and?
Well, no, January, January will be.
The next meeting of January, I think we'll, and if not, we'll, 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 we'll continue it again then.
We'll have time and if, obviously if, if, if they need more time, you know, you will, uh, let us know, right? So, um, do you have a motion, Commissioner, on that item to table it?
Well, I have, like a motion to continue to.
To continue it, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
A motion to continue? Do you have a second? We have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. Next item.
Item eleven E, this is our request for mitigation of liens for code violation of the property located at ten zero zero two Southwest Sixty Fifth Avenue. And owner Diversity Investment Group, Inc.
Are they here?
Mister Mayor, I don't see they are present. An email was sent to them on Friday with the agenda to Bennett Law Center, attention Juliet Pila. So they are not present. It is.
Okay, what's your recommendation?
This is an ongoing case, it's been ongoing on for numerous years. Prior to what, prior to any of us being here, inclusive of the new co-compliance officers. It's really four different cases. One is a recent one in twenty twenty-three, which is a driveway and approach. And that one is currently at two thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. The other three are, are building nuisance, again, another driveway and approach and, and noxious nuisance, nuisance. The grand total is over three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. They did not mitigate it. They had a chance to do so in front of the code, co-compliance board. They did not come forward. So therefore, the co-compliance board at that time decided to place a lien on her for the full amount that was due at that time. And the full amount that was due at that time was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. They failed to show up to that meeting and obviously they failed to show up to this meeting.
Do they have an attorney on record?
They have an attorney on record, which is Bennett Law, Bennett, Bennett Law. Obviously, other than the driveway approach right now that they have not handled, they are in compliance. So my recommendation is, I mean, obviously for, 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 for noxious nuisance and a building nuisance that they've, they've, you know, they've, um, moved forward in trying and have resolved those issues. And at the end of the day, what we hear about is co-compliance. I would suggest that we substantially lower the fine.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not going to do that with them, them present.
Without them present.
Because if we lowered and they're not going to show up, we reverse back and we can't, I mean, uh, let's give them, let's, uh, both clerk and Mister Attorney, because I know we have the, our official channel, procedural channel we have to hit. But also Mister Attorney hit the, the lawyer. I'd like to give them an opportunity to appear. You know, if the next meeting, they choose again not to appear to another, you know, cautionary hearing on, on, then we'll, then we'll look to mitigate or however the commission sees fit at that moment. But I'd like to give them an opportunity to appear and, and, and make their case and, you know, and see if we can get a compliance on the, on the, on the fine side to make sure that we don't revert back to the original amount. Obviously, that amount is exorbitant and we would hate to have somebody who's investing in our city be on the hook for that amount. So let's, let's please do that. Procedurally, how do we move past this item? Do we, do we table it? What's, uh, I guess we can just, as a resolution, we can just, um, we can just defer it, right?
Yes.
All right. You have a motion to defer?
Motion.
Second.
You have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's the deference of item E and F.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mister Mayor.
Next item, please.
Next item will be then item, uh, G, request for mitigation of liens for code violations of the property located at ten thirty-one Southwest Sixty Sixth Avenue. And owner Jacqueline Comas.
Okay. This is item G. Are the, are the, are the? Are the requesters here?
And Miss Comas is present.
They, they are, they are here, Mayor, and, and they can come up and, 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 and address the commission. But they, they are in compliance. There was a mix up with some former staff as to what was doing, what was not do. Our recommendation, our recommendation is to waive the fee since she's in compliance, except for the, obviously the administrative, administration fees that are attached to it. But our recommendation is to waive it because she's in compliance.
Okay, well, I, I've, I've, I've talked to the manager on this. I, I'm, I'm in concurrence with his recommendation. Does anyone have an opposition to that recommendation? Or do, do you need to hear from the applicant?
No, it's okay.
It's okay. Whatever the manager said.
Do, do you wish to speak on, on this item other than if, if we, if we go forward with waiving, with waiving the fees?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll give you a pass. Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes. Resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Jacqueline Comas on code enforcement liens for code violations of the property located at ten thirty-one Southwest Sixty Sixth Avenue, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original lien amount, providing for an effective date.
So give a motion to waive?
Mister Mayor, before, uh, they, they do have a lien on the property, so you would have to move to relieve the lien on the property.
And the, if I'm not mistaken, there's a fee on the, on the lien replacement, who's?
Yes, the nominal fee.
Who's, but who's, who's responsible for that, for that lien replacement?
The administrator. They should be, yeah.
Say that again for the, just so I'm clear?
The administrator, the cost for the administration part of it and the waiver, waiver of the fee would be, um, she would be responsible for that. We're waiving the rest of the fee.
Okay, you, you, you understand that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, do we have a motion on the waiver of fee and to release the lien?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca, Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, good night. Maro? Maro?
Hello?
Okay, next item.
Yes, item, item I. Item I is a bid tabulation report of portable water system improvement phase two project by city clerk. And on my report is that on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at three P M, the portable water system improvement phase two project bids were opened and the following bids were received. Bid number one, Metro Express for four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Bid two, Broadway Construction LLC, five million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents. Bid three, McGolc Inc., three million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Bid number four, R G Underground Engineering, four million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And H and R paving, five million, three hundred and thirteen, uh, thousand, one hun, one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Those were, visits were received and there is a recommendation.
Okay. What's, uh, Mister Engineer?
Yeah, we reviewed the bids for the city. You know, the bids were pretty much, uh, all, you know, everything was all there across the board. The low bidder was McGolc. As you all know, they have been the contractor performing construction in phase one A and one B, as well as some drainage work in the city. So they have, you know, they have quite a bit of a history with us. We recommend that to move forward with them. Their bid is, is a little bit higher than what we have currently budgeted for this particular phase of the project. However, we do have several sources of funding for the different phases and we'll be removing some of the scope of work from this particular package into one of the other phases and kind of balance things out. That's how we've kind of been handling these, these projects with the different pots of money that we have to, to work with. So we recommend to proceed with McGolc. We'll go ahead and with, with your approval, um, you know, bring their contract down to the three million we currently have budgeted for this, uh, for this phase of the project. And then we'll work on moving scope over to another phase. So we're ready to move forward with that.
Okay.
And, and Mayor, the funding, the funding for this will be the EPA grant that you went and acquired for the city. So that we're going to tie it into that grant and then move the rest of it to another, to another phase.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the engineer on this?
They were, they were, there was the, the lowest bidder, right?
Yes.
And we have a good experience with them.
We do, yes.
They has been working here and several. All right, we have a good experience and the lower bidding. She have a motion, I make a second.
You have a motion and a second?
May I, may I read the resolution, Mister Mayor?
No, yeah, go ahead.
Item J, a resolution of Mayor and City Commission of City of West Miami pertaining to procurement, selecting and approving the expense to McGolc Inc. as the lowest, most responsive, responsible bidder to construct the improvements based on the city's invitation to bid twenty twenty-three, twenty zero zero one, titled portable water system improvement phase two in the amount not to exceed, exceed three million dollars offered to the city by the Environmental Protection Agency. So we have a motion by.
You have a motion by Commissioner Blanca and a second by Commissioner Suarez.
Suarez, Commissioner Suarez, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca, Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Item K, resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the office of the city manager to execute the proposals submitted by A M I Engineering for services in connection with the City of West Miami twenty twenty-three capital improvement project, specifically drainage and pavement restoration projects funded by the American Rescue Plan Act in an amount of fifty-three thousand dollars for professional engineering services for the preparation of construction documents for the project and as described in exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Mister Engineer?
So before you, you have our proposal for the next phase of drainage projects throughout the city, working with the manager to identify some of the critical and priority areas throughout the city that we still have left. As, as you all know, the, you know, the majority of our drainage, our robust drainage system serves most of the city. But as over time, we do have spot issues that, that arise, either through just aged out infrastructure or, you know, new issues that, that arrive with, uh, broken pavement or, or things that cause drainage issues. So we've assessed a few locations that we've included in this package for this year. Based on the funding we have available, we kind of back into how many projects we could do. And I believe you have, you should have an exhibit that shows some of those locations. I can go over them if you like, but they're just, you know, several spot locations throughout the city. And then we're also taking advantage of the, you know, having to go out through this whole process and bid, bid for this work to also include some, some pavement restoration areas that are not being covered by the water projects. Most of the water projects are, as we go through with the water lines, we restore the streets. But there's some pockets of the city that, um, have, don't get touched by the water mains. So we're taking, uh, you know, we're, we're including in this project a few, uh, street segments to be restored.
So does this scope include, uh, I know we talked about areas that weren't connected to, uh, the, uh, our, our, our water pumps, right? Eleventh Street was a big one, right behind City Hall.
Yeah, so these.
They flood every time there rains.
Yeah, so these will not, these are not areas that are connected to the pump stations. You know, what we're, what we're.
Is that, is that in the scope of this work? Okay, was, so this is.
This is for, you know, essentially, uh, spot drainage. So we'll be adding exfiltration trench, French drains in most of these areas. In these areas, uh, the French drains, the French drains function. The problem is they have, they have a lifespan. A lot of the French drains that we have in these areas are fifty years old, which is probably, uh, ten times their actual lifespan, so.
Is, is there a scope of work coming on, on those projects?
Yes, Mayor, this is just at the begin, this is first phase one.
This is about, I know, I know, we've been working on this for, for, for quite a bit. So there's a scope on those, but, but that is, that is coming.
Yes, sir, that's, that is part of the, uh, the budget for this year, but we're just systematically attacking that, that list as we go down.
Yeah, we are going to hit, the biggest one was Eleventh Street that we've been talking about in years past. So we are going to hit it with this phase. It's not the ultimate solution, um, because just it, it, that's an extremely, you know, expensive lift to get it over to the pump station. But with what we're proposing, you know, we'll handle ninety-nine percent of the storms. It'll, it'll just be those extreme events that, that really, you know, you'll still have pounding.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone have any questions for the engineer?
No, so far it has been working very well.
Okay, um, does anyone have a motion on this item?
Motion.
You have a motion? You have a second, motion and a second, uh, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Item L, a resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with A M I Engineering, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and zero cents for professional engineering services to prepare construction plans for the city's portable water main improvement phase four to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mister Engineer?
So this is the next phase in our citywide portable water main master plan implementation that, that we've been undergoing now for the past few years. You know, we just awarded phase two. We've recently finished design on phase three, so you'll be seeing that hopefully in the next few months. Go out to bid, uh, and get a contractor moving on that phase. So this is the design for the, the subsequent phase, phase four. This area covers the southeast quadrant of the city. So generally, south of Sixteenth Street and east of sixty-fourth Avenue. So again, it's just an extension of the portable water master plan. We're going to be doing the same type of stuff that, that we're doing in the prior phases and, um, you know, continuing on with, with, uh, using the, the, the funding that we've been lucky enough to get to do this work.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
No.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second, call the rule.
Commissioner Suarez?
I, I make a comment.
Go ahead.
And all this, uh, work has been done. And our engineer has been very responsible, very well. So residents and everybody is happy with the way they is doing.
Yeah, and, and we're doing a lot, and we're putting a lot on the ground.
Inspector, I checking the work, they said the work is very well done.
Yep.
So.
Thank you, sir.
I'll, is that, center that motion? I think, the, the motion was made, right? Yes, uh, for, uh, who, who made the motion? You made the motion?
Commissioner Blanca, second by Commissioner Suarez.
Call the rule.
How, how do you vote, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Three, zero, item passes.
Thank you, next item.
Item M, a resolution of the mayor and the City Commission of City of West Miami relating to the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Starcraft All-Star twenty-seven feet passenger bus from Creative Bus Sales, D B A Model One, adopting the Florida Sheriff's Association Procurement Process Contract, F S A twenty-three, V E H twenty-one point zero, in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and zero cents, and providing for an effective date.
Mister Manager?
Uh, Mayor, this is to, uh, phase out the, the current bus that we have that transports our children. that transports our children from our public schools to our after-school program and for other uses, that we can double back and use it also for the community center. As you all know, that bus right now has got some issues with some of the fumes coming back into the current bus and the air conditioner is not working. This money is coming from ARPA. It was part of the capital improvement projects that we submitted to you and for this current fiscal budget year. And we recommend highly that we move forward with this, because it's a substantial upgrade for our residents and our children.
Yep. Any questions or comments for the manager on this item?
No, I understand the boss is very good. And we're buying with the, through the sheriff association involving this, so everything is crystal clear. I make a motion.
You have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item N, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement for the extension of the curbside recycling program with Miami-Dade County until March 31st, 2025, providing for services to commence October 1st, 2023, until September 30th, 2024, providing for an increase in the monthly collection and service fee, fee of from $551 to $568, including processing retroactive to May 2023 through September 30th, 2023, end of the fiscal year, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Manager?
Mayor, this is the interlocal agreement that we have with Miami-Dade County for collecting our curbside recycling program, our recycling trash. The county is currently doing it for us. It's a 4.5% increase and this is just an extension of the current interlocal.
Yep.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
These increases from the county.
Mm-hmm.
And this 17 cents a month.
Which translates to-
From $551 to $568.
Which is about a 4% increase.
Well, I see here 17 cents. That's okay.
No, no, 4%, but 17 cents.
4%?
4% of-
I know, I know, but it's, in reality, 17 cents.
Right, yeah.
All right, motion?
You have a motion?
We don't have other choice, you know, the county.
For now, correct. Motion second. Call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item O, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, approving the 2024 state legislative agenda in support of the city's priorities for the upcoming legislative session and providing for an effective date.
So on this item, the two priorities we're going after of funding are, as always, are water improvements. And we're adding an additional request for the senior activity center that we're hoping Senator Garcia and Reverend Senator Bosata will look favorably upon. And we'd like to get a resolution out of the commission to support our city's cost.
You has been working with this?
Yes.
I know. Motion?
You have a motion? You have a second. Call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 11P, a resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to consolidate numerous bank accounts into a more manageable amount of accounts, further authorizing the city manager to seek and negotiate the highest possible interest rate for monies held in such bank accounts, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Manager?
Mayor, commission, yes, this is, this is giving me authorization to be able to manage our bank accounts. Right now, we have 38 different bank accounts in different banks and we have a substantial amount of our money in very low-interest-paying accounts and in sum, it's zero. We understand that right now the current interest payments that we're, some of the quotes we're getting are between 5% to 5.5%, which is a substantial amount of money that we're leaving at the table because we never really looked at this. And this is just authorizing me to be able to do that, consolidate our banking accounts into a more manageable number and try to negotiate a much higher interest rate than what we currently are seeking.
How much money do we have, for example? And this is for not only our lockbox reserves, our restricted reserves, but also our unrestricted reserves? Correct? This is, I mean, obviously a different rate because you have to be able to act differently. But we're talking about all of that money, right?
The lockbox, yes, is all that money. Mr. Mayor, right now, our lockbox is $3.5 million at 5.5%. That would, that's going to generate another $180,000 a year, which is substantial money. And currently, we're hovering around between $10 to $12 million in all our banks. So that's a substantial amount of money that we're leaving at the table because we're not collecting the interest.
And on the unrestricted reserves, obviously, would it be possible to lock them up short-term at staggered rates? So let's say three months, six months, nine months. Let's say you stagger them at three months to get a higher interest rate and still access them. So you don't have to put them in a high-yield savings account, but stagger them. Is that possible?
Mayor, of course, that's possible. We're looking, we're actually looking at six months. Terms, we're looking at, and that's part of negotiation, but we're looking at six-month intervals and we're going to stagger them for exactly that reason.
I think this is a no-brainer. It's free money. Any questions on this?
How many, how many banks you said we have now?
We have 38 different banking accounts.
Actually?
Yes, sir.
You sure? Motion?
You have a motion? We have a second. Call the rule.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you. And I'd like to be involved in that when you go through that. I'd like to be informed as it's going through. I think that's a no-brainer and it could generate significant money for the city in our sleep. So that's good. Next item.
Item Q, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to renegotiate that certain contract with GovOffice Avenet Web Solutions, approved by Resolution 201379, dated December 19th, 2013, attached as Exhibit A, with success in interest catallies according to the terms and conditions negotiated by the city manager, which are attached here to and made apart hereof as Exhibit B, providing for an effective date.
So who's starting off the presentation? Ms. Lopez? Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. So just so you guys have a little bit of background on what the current website situation is. We contracted GovOffice in December of 2013. Since then, the website has not been redesigned. And as I'm sure you're familiar with, there's a lot of things that are outdated and need to be corrected. With that being said, I have met with several different vendors such as Revise, UniBit, TownWeb, GovUnity. Catalyst actually bought GovOffice. They've been trying to contact us for a couple of months now. We reached out to them, saw what they had to offer, and in my opinion, it is the best course of action and it will save us the most amount of money. So these are some of the examples from their sample websites. As you can see, it has a much cleaner look. It's more aesthetically pleasing. It also gives us a lot of different opportunities to inform our residents. As you can see on the bottom left-hand side of the screen, we can have certain notices pop up, the first thing that a resident will see when they come into the website. So if there is a natural disaster and we need to get certain information out to them, that can be an option for us, as well as a bunch of different other things. So as you can see there, these are just some of the things that will come with the website redesign. So anything that you see on a standard desktop or laptop will automatically be resized into a mobile device, so it has an active response in that sense. We also have the opportunity to have citizen portals, which is something that I think we needed quite a bit of time ago so that citizens can see where their request status might be. So as of right now, we have a form service in our current website where a citizen can go in, submit a request, and that's it. That's all they get out of that end. With this and on our end, it makes things a lot easier. So a request will come in, it will go to the correct department. So if there is a tree that has fallen, it will go to Public Works. They will get a notice that the complaint has been received. Then we can go ahead and let them know when they can expect a result. So if it's two weeks, they will get a notice saying you can expect a result in two weeks when that tree is trimmed. Then we can also send that resident a photo of the tree trimming. So there's a lot more transparency in our process and they will be more well-informed.
Can I stop you there?
Yeah.
So on responsive design, you're talking about, so when, right now, currently, on our, when you go to the website on our phones, it just, you have to, it just doesn't, it doesn't fit the phone. It doesn't, it's not made for the cell phone or for an iPad or... So this one would make it so that it's built for that and make it easy for you to go on the phone.
Correct.
And then for the form builder, you're talking about that link on the site where you can make a suggestion or recommendation and that right now goes to a bunch of people and no one ever knows, resident never knows if they're actually getting to anyone. This is going to give it so that, this is going to make it so the resident gets informed that the request is being serviced, how much time, and then if there's, if it's not being serviced or time elapses, it will be sent to appropriate people? Manager, you can chime in on that?
Actually, what we're proposing to do is absolutely after a four-day period, if it's not responded to, the public's by whatever department it is, I will get a notice in my inbox letting me know such request has not been responded to and we'll be able to take the appropriate action.
That's very good for residents. All right, can you continue?
And supervisors will also be able to set a priority standard. So if something comes in that needs to be corrected immediately, they can send that to whoever would need to be responsible before they can go to their other tasks that are submitted. Another thing that we will have is calendars. Right now, our calendar is a little bit scattered, so my plan would be to have a uniform calendar on the homepage of our website that shows you our meeting dates, any special events that we might have coming up, all in one place. And then we can also have them go to their respective pages. So if there's trash collection, some people don't know what those dates might be. We can have that linked under there as well. As far as documents go, our documents are all over the place in our current website and they need to be organized. I plan on doing that with Catalyst. And it will be broken up by department and more easily accessible. We can also search documents, which is not an option that we have right now. So if you're looking for a record from 1995, you'll be able to find it a lot, a lot easier. As far as business directories, we don't really have a set one. You have to go to that department's page to then see who would be responsible for whatever it is you're looking for. This would minimize that hassle for our residents where they can see every department on one page and who you would need to contact for certain things. We also have the option for micro-websites. So our police department, if they would like their own mini website within ours, which I think would be a very-
I think they do have a website, don't they? I don't know if it's active. I've been to it. It's there. I don't know, I don't know if anyone in the department actually made it, you know, a lot of things happen. But there is, there is a website currently. Look it up.
Right. And then we also have the option to do reservations. So if someone would like to reserve the rec center or the community center, it would make that process a lot easier for the people that are organizing that currently. So with that, they also have a permitting piece that we have yet to see. We plan to meet with them next week with the proper people that need to see that, since I'm not really familiar with that protocol. So that would be the largest cost that we're looking at in terms of a yearly subscription. Without that, the website management would be just under $5,000 a year, which is pretty standard. It's actually lower than most.
That's very inexpensive.
Right. And they're not charging us for a redesign since they bought Catalyst, I mean, since they bought GovOffice, they won't charge us for the redesign. They're just upping our annual service fee. As far as request management, that is the piece that I think we need the most. That was where the citizen portal will be. They also have an option for us to do online payments with a convenience fee at 2.99%. We don't have to move forward with them, but they can easily see when their water bill is due and get a notice that your payment is coming up, it's due, it's been received. So it minimizes a lot of the different vendors that we have right now. I believe we're using PayPal as one of them and there's another one somewhere else.
And they're both not great.
And then as far as one-time implementation, the permit one would be the most just because they do transfer over all of the documents from our previous database. So that would be $7,500. There is no cost in the one-time implementation, as I discussed, for the redesign. And then request management would be $1,500.
In terms of budgeting and in terms of what this resolution is, we're asking for a number not to exceed. I think it's $31,000, which will include all these things. Doesn't mean necessarily that we will. In terms of budgeting, when we did our budget, we had a higher number than that, so we're coming in lower than what we estimated we would be at.
No, I mean, look, the residents are, that's one of, one of the top complaints is to redesign the website, including the payment processing. We have a payment processing for garbage, we have different payment processing for water. The interest rates are rather high. They don't, they don't show anything, they don't give receipts, they don't show anything on the account history. That's, obviously, we have a lot of stuff on the website currently that is inaccurate, outdated. There's a lot of work and I'm glad we're kind of blowing it up and just redoing it. The payment, the permit processing, I think, is something that is long overdue. I think that's something that we've talked about a lot. I'll go with your recommendation myself, manager, on whether to do it with all in one vendor, which adds benefits, you know, in terms of interaction. But I'm definitely in favor, especially we're coming under budget. The servicing fee, the annual service fee is very, very reasonable. And the fact that they're not charging us a redesign fee, which would be rather expensive because they want to keep the client, is a huge benefit. So I'm in favor. But, Mr. Manager, let me hear your recommendation and then we'll head to the table.
My recommendation is to move forward with a number not to exceed what's in the resolution, which gives me the latitude to look at it and see if we can combine all this and we're going to be below what we budgeted for the beginning of the year.
Okay.
I agree. I agree that you renegotiate that. I totally agree with the concept. Yes, sir. You need a motion? I make a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? Call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Suarez. Mayor Diaz, Commissioner Suarez?
Vote.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner, Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Three zero, item passes.
Thank you. And thank you, Gabby, for that presentation. Next item?
Item 12 is consent agenda items, and you have three items as part of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have any issues with any of the items? Or we have a motion on all the items?
Motion.
They're all interlocals except, yeah, in Grant. We have a motion? We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? None? Next item?
Item 13, good of the order.
Anyone for good of the order?
Good nothing.
Ah. Seeing nothing for good of the order, you have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.